Bob, you're on mute.
Thank you. I'll do it again. Announcement is made. An adequate purpose of this meeting has been given, and that is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10,4,6, FSEC of the New Jersey Oklahoma Community Act. We will dispense with the pledge of allegiance for this evening. At this point, is there any member of the public that has any business to be brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? I guess people would be raising their hand. Is that correct, Nora?
Right. If you pull up, if you pull up participants, you should be able to see that.
Participants. Okay. All right. First of all, we have some resolutions. 2012, 1968, 2015, 2024, 2030, 2027, 2001, 2017, 2028, 1964. Are all the same people on those, Nora?
No, I'm not on 2024.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm not on 2024.
Oh, okay.
So if you want, I can move everything but 2024, and you make a separate motion?
That's fine. Go ahead and do that.
Okay, I propose that we adopt application 2012, 1968, 2015, 2030, 2027, 2001, 2017, 2028, and 1964.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll, please.
Jaskiewicz?
Yes.
Parek?
Yes.
Prasad? Prasad, is your mute on?
He's on. He's on mute.
Ready? Willens?
Yes.
Ira Kane?
Yes.
Prasad?
We'll take that as an abstention. Before we do anything else, Nora, we forgot to do the roll.
Yes, I have that. Mr. Berkowitz?
Here.
Mr. Jaskiewicz?
Here.
Mr. Parek? Mr. Prasad?
Here.
Mr. Ready?
Fuzzin'.
Ms. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Willens?
Here.
Chairman Ira Kane?
Present.
We also have our board attorney, Mr. King, our board planner, Mr. Chadwick, and our board engineer, Mr. Followway.
Here.
Nora, I'm here to...
Here.
You said that. Oh, Kaplan's here.
Someone like to move, what was it, 2024? Is that the one you're not on?
Correct. Yeah, 2024.
Somebody move 2024 so we can get... I hear a move on 2024?
Yes, Jaskiewicz has moved on Resolution 20.24.
There's a second?
I said a good news.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Ready cannot second this one. Parek, you want to second it?
Second it.
Okay. Jaskiewicz?
Yeah.
Parek?
Yes.
Willens?
Yes.
Ira Kane?
Yes.
I just want to double check. We have two pages of resolutions. Did we go through them all?
Yes, we did.
You had 1964?
Yes.
We're gonna, we have to carry 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 5, 5 applications. I will read them. 1940, 2022, 2013, 2009, and 2005. We're proposing that they be carried to February 24th. That's without any further notice. Is that correct, Nora?
That's correct, but 2005 will be carried to January 20th, where the others will be February 24th.
All right. All right. So let's, I guess we'll do that one separately. So before I mention, do I have a motion to carry those to February 24th without further notice? And Nora, you'll make sure we get whatever extensions are applicable?
Absolutely. Two seconds?
There's a second?
Second Snyder.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, good. Now, 2005 gets moved to a special meeting on January 20th?
Correct.
Do I have a motion to that?
So moved.
A second?
Second Snyder.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Jahad Zildan, application 2020. We're gonna carry it from which way, Nora?
We are carrying it to February 24th.
Motion to carry 2020 to February 24th without further notice and with whatever extensions are required?
So move Snyder.
Any discussion? Who's second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that carries. All right. So we are at 2035. Jason and Kelly Anderson, Dolly Drive, seeking for a variance to construct a shed and open deck with stairs.
The applicants, Jason and Kelly Anderson, raise your right hand.
Jason Anderson, great. And I think I see a third party there also. I don't know.
Yeah.
You're gonna testify? Okay, good.
I do. And you're the owners of the subject property? Yes. Mr. Chairman, the...
Somebody, somebody's gotta turn down his speaker. We're getting a lot of feedback.
Peter?
Peter? I can barely hear mine, so I'm pretty low.
Yeah, you're good.
Okay. Anderson. So you have a home in an R3 of a conforming lot, 160, oh, I'm sorry, that's a lot number. Looks like you have a conform 105. Yes, you have a conforming lot in an R3 zone. You have currently 30.51% impervious coverage. You're allowed 30%. You're proposing 31.91, which amounts to about 150 square feet of variance. You want to put up a 12 by 16 shed and an 18 by 20-foot open deck with 3 foot by 5 foot stairs. Is your deck going to be open? Is it going to be tonne and groove, or is it going to be boards that will have a space between the boards? Somebody like to answer that question? Jason? Kelly?
He's on mute.
He's on mute.
Sorry about that.
Take yourself off mute, okay?
I'm sorry about that. Yeah, it's gonna be not tonne and groove. It's gonna have space between.
Okay, so there will be some drainage that will go through. Now, what's below the deck? Is it dirt?
Right now, it's grass. It'll be dirt, I guess. Yeah.
All right. So there will be a certain amount of drainage that goes through there. So when you consider that, Mr. Chadwick, we really don't have a case here, do we? Where is Mr. Chadwick? I lost Mr. Chadwick. You here?
Yeah, he's on mute also.
I believe he's under you on the screen.
Are we okay now?
Yes.
This is where we have the pool as part of the coverage, and he's also got a paved patio. If you consider those areas, he'd be under the requirement. Remember, they count the water in the pool as coverage?
Right. And the deck, the deck, since it's open, it's, if they count it, but it's, it's doable. You're not requesting any side yard setbacks, any building coverage variances. You're not requesting any rear yard setbacks. All you, all you need is this one and a half percent of impervious coverage. Any other questions by the board?
No.
Are there any members of the public who have any questions of these witnesses on the testimony given?
I have a question, Chairman. The size of the shed, is it 8 by 10 or 10 by 10? Because two different numbers, two different papers I have here.
There's 12 by 16 in the application.
It's a deck, I think.
And I think on the, on the plan, it says 12 by 16 also. Yeah, plan also says 12 by 16. I guess that's the size, right, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, sir.
Where do you see 8 by 10?
In, in the application, 12 by 16 is the back. The shed is 8 by 10, and another application I have here, it says 10 by 10.
That may be what I have, because I think there's a small, currently small shed there that's being moved.
So there, there's an existing shed that you're going to remove?
Correct. It's on the original survey that I submitted.
But the application not...
I don't, I don't see that original shed.
It's there.
Okay. I don't see it.
Well, the question is, what size is shed? And it's 12 by 16.
It's gonna be 12 by 16, correct.
If you're facing the front of your house, is that shed to the right of the pool?
So that is... Down. So on my application, there's an enclosed frame deck to the right of the pool, which is going to be removed, as well as a small metal, it says PP shed, but it's a metal side, like old shed that will be also removed to then have the deck, the new shed, put in.
Okay, why isn't that on the survey?
It, it is.
Okay. I'm looking at it, unless there's another survey circulating.
You see, like, right there is the closed. That's going to be taken down, and...
Yeah, that's not what I'm seeing.
That little square.
I don't mean to interrupt, because it's being removed. When the review was done, the survey is altered, the old shed was wiped out, and the proposed was drawn in.
That could be. That is true on the, on the...
Yeah, but that deck, he's calling it a deck. Right? An enclosed deck?
No, no, no. That's what I have. That's going away. It's no longer gonna be an enclosed deck. It's just gonna be a regular tracks deck. Like with railings and a, and a stairway.
Yeah, I see what you want to build. I'm just not seeing the existing, what you're talking about, and what you just showed me on your screen.
Okay.
On, on the survey that I'm looking at.
Right. So I think Nora just said that maybe the piece that you have, that, that had been wiped out.
Yeah. The, the practice with the zoning department is to go the pose and erase what is being removed. I think, and everything that he just discussed is where the new deck is going. So they always take off what is being removed. They...
Yeah, that, I, I get that, but the, the, the closed-in deck we're talking about is pretty sizable. So I understand the practice, but it is kind of misleading in a way, because by looking at the survey, you would never know. He's got a pretty sizable enclosed deck, and if it's coming down, that's fine. It's coming down. But it's worth mentioning, especially when you look at the footprint of it, the existing footprint.
I'm confused. What's your, what's your concern, Nancy?
Well, my concern, it's all about disclosure. It's all about awareness in regards to what the board's considering, and situational awareness as to what's coming down versus what's going up, David. As long as it's coming down, that's fine, but it's a, it's a sizable closed-in deck. And, you know, it's just, it's, it's one of these things where, you know, it's not mentioned until I brought, you know, I mean, I know he briefly mentioned it, but due to the footprint, it's, it's definitely, you know, a sizable structure. So it's good to know that it's coming down.
But we're, we're looking at a request here for a variance on what's allowed and what he's looking in existing and changing. So I, I guess my question is, what your, your concern is, is Ms. Snyder?
My concern is that the shed is not gonna accompany this closed-in deck that he, you know, he has, because there's, it's a sizable footprint. If that's coming down, that's fine. The shed's gonna be there, and then he's gonna reconstruct the deck with the railing, as he mentioned in his testimony. It's just that, you know, you know, had I not looked into it, I would have never known that, about the footprint of that, that enclosed deck. And, you know, I'm always concerned about impervious coverage and, and just the fact that we're not squeezing every structure known to mankind on a limited law.
If he agrees to conform, if he agrees to conform to the survey, then there shouldn't be any question as to what's there now.
Understood.
Is it gonna have any effect on the application?
If it comes down, no.
Okay, he says he's taking it down. End of story. Is there any other questions of this applicant on the, on the presentation this evening?
Yeah.
I hear none of the senior from the board. Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? I hear none and seen none. Someone like to make a recommendation for approval?
Sure, I will. I, I'm gonna be voting for it. It increases the functionality of the property, and it also enhances the enjoyment of the homeowners of this property.
Someone's ready for a question, so we can move on?
I will. Application 2035, Jason Kelly Anderson, 26 Dolly Drive, block 166, lot 100, zone R3, that we allow and permit the construction of a shed, an open deck with scares, stairs, that is, contrary to Section 430-35, column 13.
There's a second, please?
Second, Kaplan.
Thank you. Any discussion? Nora, please call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Jaskiewicz? Jaskiewicz, you're muted. Thumbs up. Okay. Kaplan?
Yes.
Parek?
Yes.
Prasad? Prasad? You're muted.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Willens?
Yes.
Ira Kane?
Yes. The variance is granted. We memorialize this at our next meeting, which is in two weeks. At that point, you guys will be free to get your permits and everything, go from there. Okay?
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. We need to stay on anymore, or?
No, you guys can go watch TV.
Have a good day.
Okay, let's call a case. 2049. Michael Lantherman, 164 Fox Hill Road, seeking a C variance to construct an open deck with stairs and shed. It's pretty much the same application. Is Mr. Lantherman on the...
I'm here.
You're there. I don't see you. I'm sorry.
Mr. Lantherman, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear from testimony about to get from the board to choose to help you God?
I do.
And you're the owner of the subject property?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the witness is sworn.
Okay. All righty. So you're Fox Hill Road. Oh my gosh, you got a really high-shaped property, huh? You are in the R3 zone, which is 15,000 square feet, and this property looks like it's more than 15,000 square feet. Would you agree, Mr. Lantherman?
It looks like it, but there's a large slope in the backyard.
But, but you're, but it's your property, right? It's all your property.
Yeah.
Okay, so you are, you have a conforming lot. You're, you're proposing 29 feet front yard for a shed and 36 feet front yard open deck. Now, as I look at this, how many, how many streets do you front on? Are you front, like, on three sides of your property?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, kinda.
You're, you're, you're kind of not able to escape front yards, are you?
No, I'm not.
Okay. So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm looking at the, the alignment of your house, and what you're proposing is in the rear, the property, I'm just trying to see how Fox Hill Road, what's Fox Hill Road, the right...
I know Steve's gonna want you on the video, too. So did you call it? You can't call it now. Or you're calling it on another phone?
I'm gonna call it. I gotta find that number again.
Who's, who's...
It's Nora.
Yep.
That's not me. Oh, I'm sorry. My mistake. I'm sorry, Nora. She sounds a lot like you.
Lantherman is muted for some reason. Mr. Lantherman, can you unmute yourself? Or somebody unmute him? All right. So I'm, I'm looking at your property, and you're, you're proposing north, I guess that's the northwest corner of your property, which kind of comes to a point. You're proposing the shed. I guess that's what you consider your backyard. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And the shed is gonna be 29 feet off the property. Is there a reason why that is where it is? Can it, I'm, I'm assuming that because of land or your backyard, the way you have it, you think that's the most optimal place?
Well, originally, I was zoned, when I first wanted to put it there, the zoning board wanted me to put it in the front yard, which I did not want it in my front yard. Although, I would like it in the back, just because it doesn't want, I don't want to have an eyesore. And the problem with that is that I have such a large slope in the backyard that I'm kind of limited on where I can put it.
So it's topography is the problem for the issue?
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay. And the deck, I guess, a 12 by 16-foot deck is not an overly large deck, and the way it comes out at the one point, you're 36 feet from the prop, from the frontage. You're allowed 40, you're proposing 36. That's not just a bad thing. Anybody else have a question or anything about this? Nobody has any questions about this? And you're not taking anything down?
Yes.
Is that correct? There's nothing that's not on the survey?
Nothing is coming down.
Right.
All right.
Yeah, I have not so much, well, I do have a question. I could completely understand why the applicant wants to cite this as he does. It's understandable regarding the fact that it is his backyard, despite the legality of everything. Is, have you given thought in regards to the vantage point from the street to put some greenery growth? So, well, first of all, so you have privacy in your backyard. But second of all, it obstructs the, the sight of the structures from the street.
Yeah, I actually do want to do that eventually. It just, it's very expensive to line the entire length of my property with trees.
How about three or four trees just behind the shed?
That's fine by me. I'll put anything on that hill. I don't care.
I mean, it improves the aesthetics of the street, right? Again, I go back to the fact that you and I are in the same situation. I'm on a busy road, too, and I love my privacy. And, and listen, it's a win-win situation, and I, and I totally agree with you in regards to not wanting to cite it in your front yard. I think that that would not be conducive to, you know, a nice-looking piece of property.
Okay. Now, and you, when you're talking about, like, shrubs or trees, did you see the head walls there? Did you want me to stay away from the head walls?
I did, I did. I did. But you got patches of bareness, don't you?
Oh, yeah. The whole entire hill is pretty bare.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, listen, anything that's going to present a more pleasing visual from the street, and, you know, again, I think it's a win situation for you in regards to privacy.
You know what? I got a lot of, I got a couple complaints from, like, people that live around here that try to pull out onto Fox Hill Road, which they were complaining that there were some shrubs in their way when they're trying to walk through in the corner to pull out into the street. I had to cut back some shrubs with evil so they could see. So I'm willing to put up stuff. It doesn't matter to me.
Do you think it's a safety hazard?
Not if he pulls it in enough. I mean, he's got, what, 29 feet, and then 36?
Yeah, I got, I got plenty of wood there, so I don't have any issues putting up any kind of trees.
Well, I think if you blocked off the shed, just put up a couple of, well, you know, maybe a couple of Norway's bruises or something that will block the shed. The deck, I don't think has a, it doesn't have ugly curb appeal. I, I don't, that, that's just normal part of your house.
That works for me.
Any other questions by the board?
I just want to make sure that the municipal engineers' issues are addressed, too. That's all I had.
Yeah, the engineer department, they contacted me, and I talked to Paul about it already.
Okay.
So he, I got an email from him, and he was okay with all the stuff that we talked about.
Sounds good.
Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given? I hear none and seen none. Someone like to make a recommendation?
I will. You know, much like the previous case, I'll be voting for it. It increases the functionality of his house, his, the usage of his house. And, you know, I, I don't think it's going to be unsightly. I think it's gonna be pleasant-looking. I suggest the shrubbery for everybody's interest, and I'll be voting for it.
Someone like to frame a resolution, please?
I will. An application 2049, Michael Lantherman, 164 Fox Hill Road, block 102.1, lot 1, zone R3, that we grant a C variance to construct an open deck with stairs and shed contrary to Section 430-35, column 4.
There's a second? Any discussion? Nora, please call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Jaskiewicz? Jaskiewicz?
Where is he? He's giving you thumbs up.
Thumbs up, got it. How to find it. Kaplan?
Yes.
Parek?
Yes.
Prasad?
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Snyder?
Yes.
Willens? Davey, unmute yourself.
Sorry about that, yes.
Ira Kane?
Yes. The bulk of the variance is granted. We'll memorialize this in two weeks. You'll be free to proceed. Happy holidays.
Thank you so much.
Application 2025, JCPN Health, minor site plan with D variance to construct a storage shed.
Yes, my name's Sean McGowan. Can everyone hear me?
Barely.
Thank you. My name's Sean McGowan. I'm the attorney representing the... Thank you. Uh, my name's Sean McGowan. I'm the attorney representing the applicant. Uh, the applicant is First Energy Corp., also known as JC P and L. Uh, they have submitted an application to you on their property at forty-six Parsippany Boulevard. Um, that is block four fifty, lot three, uh, to construct an accessory building towards the rear of their property. Uh, we are here for you, the zoning board, tonight, uh, because the building needs to be fifteen point nine feet high, which is above the permitted for an accessory building in the zone. Um, and therefore we need a D variance from you, the zoning board. Uh, tonight, we're gonna be presenting two witnesses to you. Uh, the first is gonna be John Greco, who is a representative of First Energy Corp. And he's gonna explain exactly why, uh, First Energy Corp. needs the, needs to install the accessory building on their property. Uh, secondly, we're gonna have Michael Seal, the architect who designed the building. He's also a licensed planner, so he will provide the planning testimony. Uh, he has a presentation for you that he'll run through, uh, as quickly or as in, as detailed as you would like, um, and answer any questions on the need for the building and the details of the building. Um, and with that, if you don't have any questions, I would like to call my first witness. Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Okay, with that, I would call, uh, John Greco. As I said, he's in a, uh, representative of the applicant. Uh, he's not a, a professional, so obviously you will wanna swear.
Mr. Greco, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear firm testimony about to give before the board's truth to help you God?
I do.
And you're, you're representative of, uh?
Yes, I manage the environment, the environment, essential.
Um, Mr. Chairman, the witnesses sworn.
Okay.
Can the witness, can the, can the witness shut down his speaker? I can hear feedback.
I think the witness has to speak.
Yeah, you're.
I didn't, I didn't say his microphone. I said the speaker that, I don't know, I'm hearing feedback, much like we heard from feedback when you got on, uh, counselor.
You're on mute, John.
See if the host can manipulate. Does she never have this problem with, um, Zoom?
Uh, is that any better? Am I still?
Yes, much better. It's much better.
Alright, let me just give you a brief overview of the building. Uh, obviously, our line shop in, we call it the Boot and Line Shop, we service three counties. Morris, Essex, and state counties. It's a very active shop. We're moving equipment uh, back and forth. And why I'm involved as the environmental manager is at times, we move electrical equipment that may have been involved in a carpool accident, a lightning strike or whatever. And when it's moved back to the shop, we need to get it protected and out of the elements. We place them in these containment tubs. And then we need, need to move those containment tubs inside. We have a very small line shop there. We have a six bay garage with twelve line trucks. And space is very limited. Sometimes this electrical equipment is leaking oil, needs to be contained, and obviously getting it out of the weather, uh, helps everyone. So the reason we need to construct the building there is just to provide some additional space. So when we remove electrical equipment, when it's placed in these containment tubs, we're able to move it undercover. One of the primary reasons for the variance is we move that equipment with forklifts. So we need to be able to move these containment tubs with these transformers in it, inside this building. You know, lifting it up with the forklift, obviously, we need the, uh, overhead space. Uh, again, we're placing this building on an already uh, concrete type pad. Uh, we're not increasing any impervious surface. Uh, it will enable us to comply better with some of the environmental regs that we have to comply with by getting this material undercover, so we do not have any sheen type uh, flow from, uh, storm events. Uh, we're very sensitive to the environmental issues there because we're directly adjacent to the Jersey City watershed. We're really careful with how we manage that equipment there. This just is an additional step for us to better protect the area from any uh, potential sheen runoff from any of that electrical equipment that is removed. We're also going to use it for, uh, the placement of drums. We're constantly managing uh, spills out in the field. So we have a carpool accident on Route forty-six and we have to excavate some soils. That material is placed in drums and transported back to the local line shop, in this case, the Boot and Line Shop. And we can place that material inside the storage building. The building will be designed so it's slightly pitched towards the back of the building so that if anything does potentially leak out, it will be contained within that building and not, uh, impact anything beyond that building. Uh, it's going to be a shed type building, so it will be an open front. Uh, no plumbing is required. We will have a couple of electrical outlets and some lighting. Again, constructed on an already paved or, in this case, concrete type surface. So we, I have Mike Chiobaum with us. He's the engineer who designed the building and he could graphically show you some additional details.
I, I have one question. Uh, is there gonna be PCV or any hazardous materials stored in, uh, this facility?
Highly unlikely, but we still do have, uh, some equipment out in the field that does contain PCVs. Uh, less than two percent of the electrical transformers that are in service. Uh, we already manage that at every one of our line shops. We have very specific TASCIA uh, requirements. Uh, so we have to manage that material. I'll give you an example. If, say, we remove the transformer and it's taken out of service, we have an, a, an environmental contractor that manages that event in the field. Uh, there are specific storage requirements. For instance, TASCIA type waste, which is greater than fifty ppm PCB has to be moved off-site within thirty days. It has to be manifested cradle to grave. Uh, we're already managing it at all of our sites throughout First Energy, Jersey Central. Uh, this building will just be one step in the right direction that we have some additional room. At times, we have to move line trucks out of the, out of the garages to move these containment pallets inside the garages. And that sometimes affects our reliability because when these trucks are left outside in the snow, ice conditions, it affects the, uh, response time. So again, that's one of the primary reasons for, uh, for us asking permission for this, uh, building construction is basically to enable us to move this material out of the elements undercover.
So, uh, this is Nancy Snyder, uh, to Mr. Kane's point. And to what you just said, I wanna be clear. You already manage PCVs on this site as it is now, correct?
We do. Again, they're still and far between. Um, you know, for, for example, we have three hundred and fifty or so spills this year. And of those three hundred and fifty spills, this is not just for the Boot and Shop. This is, you know, across the Jersey Central Power and Light footprint in New Jersey. Of those, I believe we have three that came back as PCB contaminated. So rare that it happens, but it does continue to happen.
But I guess if we were to give you this variance, would it increase the, the amount of PCVs handled and moved to this site?
Absolutely not. It's, uh, just routine restoration type work. We're not looking to, you know, move any equipment from our Flemington district to the Boot and Shop because we have this building. And just as another example, we've already constructed, it's a cookie cutter type design. We've constructed the exact same building at our Flemington line shop, our Union and our Hope House. So this is just another continued compliance step for me to get these buildings installed at all of New Jersey, Jersey Central Power and Light line shops.
Right, so this expands storage, but does, does not necessarily intensify the handling of increased amount of PCVs. Am I getting that correct? Like at this property that you normally do current, currently, correct?
Exactly.
Okay, so, uh, in regards to the, if you, uh, you know, you were to get this variance, does it increase the hours of operation at the site?
It does not. I mean, normally we run what's called trouble shifts. So we're running trucks out of that location on a twenty-four seven basis. Our normal operations are seven thirty to three thirty, but then we'll run one or two trouble trucks, again, dependent on weather, out of that line shop from three thirty to eleven and then eleven to seven thirty. So we're already running three shifts, again, scaled back shifts after normal seven thirty to three thirty. But again, if we get a storm hit, obviously, things change.
Well, cor- correct, but I'm just saying that, uh, by virtue of this, what you wanna use as storage for this precious equipment, and I get it, um, it does not increase the, the normal hours of operations. Am I getting that correct? Obviously, all betroff during emergencies. We all can relate to emergencies.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Greco, uh, can you tell me if, uh, th- this building will be in sight of any residential area nearby? You, you know if there's any houses that will be able to see any more of an industrial look than is already there?
No, Mike, Mike will be able to jump in and show you.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. John's welcome to answer the question, but, uh, Mr. Chiovin's gonna provide you with a detailed presentation and answer any questions about the location of the building on the site, the details of the building. He even has a photo of the building that Mr. Greco mentioned, uh, that's pretty much exactly the same building, but in Flemington. Um, so you'll be able to see all that when, when the architect testifies.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Mike, you wanna drop in?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if there's no further questions, I will, uh, uh, introduce Mr. Chiovin.
Mr. Chiovin, if you could raise your right hand, you swore firm testimony about to give before the board's true self, you got?
Can we just hold off for one second because, are there any members of the public that have any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening? I hear none seen.
Okay, Mr. Chiovin. You are muted. You're on mute, Mike.
Great. Uh-huh, so you, you, you swore, you, I swore you in, correct?
Yes.
And you're, you're a, um, certified, uh, architect and planner, correct?
Correct, yes.
And all your licenses are in full force and effect?
They are, they are, yes.
And you've been qualified, uh, before this board and other boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, many other boards are at the state.
Um, Mr. Chairman, he's, uh, been qualified as an expert.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Uh, Chiovin, you prepared the architectural plans that were submitted to the township as part of this application, correct?
Uh, yes, I did.
Um, well, I'd like you to explain those plans, but I know you also prepared an exhibit that I forwarded to the board. Um, and I'm not exactly sure of the process of putting that exhibit on the screen, whether that's gonna be Mr. Chiovin or someone from the township side that will put that exhibit on the screen. But Mr. Chiovin, is now, now the appropriate time to put that on the screen?
Uh, yes, and actually I could share that if that's, if that's possible from my end.
Perfect, please do.
It's not.
This is IT. You need me to post.
Michael, for some reason, it's not sharing the content.
Okay, uh, Mr. Hoffker, as the host, could you potentially, uh, put it on the screen? I, I emailed it to Ms. Jolie earlier today, but I can also email it to you if necessary right now.
Yes, it's Michael Coben that I need to give permission to share?
Correct, yes.
He can now share his screen.
Okay, thank.
Great, yes, thank you.
Okay, I, I believe we can see it. So I would like to, uh, mark this exhibit as A1. Please proceed, please.
Sure, this, basi- basically, this is our, our cover sheet for our, our, uh, submittal, uh, uh, going through the location map, the property owner's list, uh, zoning data, uh, and the property location. Our next slide here is an aerial view of the site, uh, taken from a perspective above, uh, Parsippany Boulevard. And, uh, in the, in the foreground, you're, you're seeing the principal building, which is kind of a, a U-shaped building. Our proposed building, uh, let me see if I can get this full screen. There you go. Uh, our proposed building is, uh, indicated at, at, at a rear yard area on the property. Uh, and, uh, there's kind of a, um, some sort of indication of the building, uh, at that location. Uh, you can see that the building is surrounded. I, a question came up about, uh, whether or not the, uh, uh, the building could be seen and, uh, there's, there's a lot of, uh, uh, tree buffers around the, the perimeter of property, so, uh, the building is not readily visible from, uh, from the street or adjacent properties.
Question on that. Can you zoom, can you zoom that shot just a minute? Cause to me, it looks like there's some houses across the street. Can you zoom that in a little bit?
In the back?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure I can zoom this.
Alright, thank you. I just thought I'd ask.
Okay. Um, this is a view from, uh, Parsippany Boulevard and, uh, uh, the notation, uh, with the arrow, with the red dot is showing the, uh, approximate area of where the building would be. Uh, probably a bit of the top would be, uh, of the top of the building would be visible from, from Parsippany Boulevard. But just at the entrance, it's, it's set way back from Parsippany Boulevard.
But behind that, what's behind that? Where's the red dot? Is that my, what is my question? Is there residential area behind that?
That, but that's probably, that residential area is probably close to, I would say, uh, six hundred feet beyond that point.
Okay, thank you.
This is a, uh, um, uh, kind of like a plan of the, uh, of the JC P and L property and the surrounding, uh, properties. Uh, to the north, uh, is the, uh, uh, Jersey City, uh, uh, reservoir property. Uh, again, the, the earlier shot, the just shot that I just had, uh, on the screen was taken from Parsippany Boulevard, uh, at the principal building here. Uh, we have residential properties, residential lots here to and to the west, there is a new residential, there is, uh, residential buildings that are, uh, I think constructed and then some, some new buildings that are under construction presently back here. Our building is, uh, is here. And, um, again, uh, the site is ringed by trees. And, uh, the site is actually where the building is elevation wise and grade wise, it's much lower than the surroundings. So uh, the residential areas are at a higher elevation than the, uh, the grade elevation, uh, of where the new building is proposed.
Good, thank you.
This is a, uh, more of a site plan with, with showing the, uh, showing the grading of, of the site. And again, to the north here would be the, uh, uh, the watershed property. Uh, to the south, there are residential lots here. And, uh, to the west, again, a residential development. Uh, again, the site is surrounded by trees. The building will not, uh, be readily visible, uh, from, uh, from those, uh, uh, from those properties. Given the, uh, given the terrain and the configuration and the grading.
How, excuse me, how far from the transmitter is this building gonna be approximately?
Uh, the transmission tower?
Yep.
Okay, the transmission tower, if, uh, let me see if I can annotate that. I believe the transmission tower is about right here in the purple.
Right. Okay, I see. Okay, that, the purple is the transmission tower?
That, approximate location, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Now, um, uh, this is a, uh, part of the enlarged, uh, more of a site plan of, of the actual building. And the building is, as Mr. Greco testified earlier, uh, it's being constructed on a, uh, an existing concrete, uh, uh, on, on existing concrete pavement. So we're not. on on existing concrete pavement, so we're not really adding any additional impervious service surfaces to the site. And we are going to repair all the concrete surfaces around around the building itself. And and basically, it's going to be, you know, essentially the same grading of the of the existing site, the way it is right now. These are photos of where the building would be located. Again, this is you mentioned the transmission tower, the transmission tower is in the rear. The building would be constructed approximately here, you can see a lot of the transformers that are just out in the open at this point here. This is another view of of the location of where the building would be located, again, showing the the transformers just stacked out in the open. And also, Mr. Greco mentioned the forklift, and this is the forklift that's used to load and unload the equipment on the onto the line trucks.
And is that the reason necessary for the the exceeding of the the height? The proposed height and the limit?
Correct, correct, because essentially, a lot, a lot of times what what they'll do is they will actually back the truck in into the building and have the forklift inside the building, depending on weather conditions and such. And we really need that clearance height to to make it safe, to make a safe transfer for loading and unloading.
So Mr. Chauvin, can you confirm that I think I actually misspoke in my opening? That the proposed height of this building is to be 17.9 feet? And the permitted is 15 feet, so we're really only exceeding it by two feet.
It's two, two feet, nine inches, correct?
So two feet, seven, five feet, I should say, two feet, nine inches.
Okay. Yes. This is another view of where the site would be. Again, this is looking from the west, this would be from that residential development, but it would be rarely, it wouldn't really be seen from that vanish point. Again, it's at it's at a lower grade elevation at that point. These are plans of the building, the building is a going to be a kind of a plain building, a metal metal panel building, metal roof, metal sides. The building will be open at at one side for access. And as Mr. Greco mentioned too earlier, the slab of the building will be sloped from the front of the building here to the rear, so if there's any any discharge or whatever, it could be contained and collected within within the building. This is a similar building that was built at the Flemington site and which would be very similar to the the building that was is going to be proposed here at at this site. So it's a, you know, neutral colors, neutral metal panel siding and roof cover. And again, this is a kind of a close up view of the the front elevation of the building. So to the, I guess, to the left side here, we have the various elevations here. So I have an elevation from grade here to the the gable portion of the roof at that's measures at 20 foot, six inches. The the building height, as defined by the ordinance, is the midpoint of the gable, which measures out at 17, nine inches. And again, the 15 feet is the clearance that we're providing to this header here for for the for the line truck and the forklift to operate in. Are there any questions for the board on on the on the building itself?
Can I talk about operations of that building now that you've described it?
Maybe for operations, I think maybe Mr. Greco could.
Miss Snyder, why don't you ask your questions and if Mr. Greco needs to come?
Okay, that's fine. I'll start with the non operational question in regards to the size of this and the the concrete foot, not the pavement footprint, the concrete footprint, right? I it's less than the existing concrete footprint that you currently have all kinds of equipment on, am I getting that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Basically, the existing concrete area is much larger than this building presently. So what we're doing is we're constructing a building right over that larger concrete area.
Mr. Chauvin, I believe the building is 40 feet by 26 feet, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And then again, going back to the operation of it, because, you know, while everybody's saying this is all 600 feet away from residential areas, there are there is a strip of residential area in one side than the other side. And so how how does this intensify the use of that property relative to noise? As it relates to what can be heard, even though they're at a higher elevation. I just I'm concerned about the intensive intensification of this operation and what they're going to hear, what's going to be different? You know, after after this is all up and you guys are all operating?
Well, this is John Greco. It really does not change what is currently taking place. We're we're already moving equipment back and forth, offloading, loading. This, the only changes. It will now be equipment that's taken out of the field that potentially is leaking. Instead of it going into the garage as it exists right now, it will be going into the storage building. Again, they're already moving transformers as you as we identified in that one picture. When there's an outage, a truck pulls into that back lot, loads up the transformer onto the back of the line truck and they use slings on ears on the sides of the transformers, that's why we need the height. But it's it's already happening at the site, there will be no change in our current operations.
Yeah, I really want to ensure that there's no noticeable extended period of time, right, of all this equipment moving to the point where residents are like, what the heck, this was never like this when we moved here?
That I get it, and there will be no change in our current operations.
Thank you.
It's already taking place.
No, I bet, right, thank you.
And and if I can, if I can add to that, I I believe that really the building is providing shelter for this equipment. And it's it's also adding a measure of safety for for the operations there.
Could I just comment on that too from the one picture? It appears a lot of transformers are already laying on the ground around out there. This building is going to make it safer and more convenient for those units to be reprocessed, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so that's an advantage to the residents and to us in the town. Is that why that's the main reason you're doing this?
Well, the primary reason is for electrical equipment taken out of service that has the potential to leak. And we need to get it undercover, that's the primary reason, but there will be room inside for other types of equipment, like there's breakers that may need to be stored inside and protected from the elements until they're put in service. So yes, there will be some brand new electrical equipment that may be temporarily stored in there. But the primary reason for the building is for equipment taken out of service that's placed into these containment tubs.
So if I understand correctly, when something's taken out of service and brought to the yard right now, it's in a more exposed and hazardous situation than it will be in the future?
Exactly.
Is that correct?
Yes, it's being protected from the elements, so rain, snow. Again, we move this equipment very quickly, so when it's taken out of service, within a week, week and a half, it's loaded onto a flatbed truck and taken out to a warehouse out in Bethel, Pennsylvania. For either refurbishment or scrapping the unit out, so it moves pretty quickly. It's not technically stored for long periods of time, it'll be primarily for the short durations.
And so JCPN L has these buildings in many places. And the reason you need the variance is for a height thing, so your forklifts can work more safely in the area or efficiently.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions of this witness?
Well, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chauvin needs to go through a little bit of his planning testimony since he's also the planner, but if you'd like to ask questions or see if the public has questions for him as an architect first, by all means, go ahead.
Okay, from the architectural standpoint, is there any questions by the board or members of the public? I hear none and see none.
Okay, great, Mr. Chauvin, could you just provide some brief testimony about the justification for the height variance? But I'd also like to put on the record that in addition to the height variance, there are pre existing variances that would be otherwise be classified as C variances. They are, the minimum lot width is 172 feet, whereas 200 feet is required in the ordinance. Obviously, that's a pre existing condition that cannot be changed. Additionally, the front yard setback of the principal building is 43 feet, whereas 75 feet is required. Once again, you know, there's no proposed changes whatsoever to the to the building in the front of the property and its pre existing, not performing condition. With that in mind, Mr. Chauvin, would you mind providing the planning testimony necessary for the board to grant the variance?
Okay, well, in in addition to those setbacks too, the the actual, the accessory building is is compliant with all the setback requirements for this particular zone also in in side yard and rear yard. And basically, in accordance with the with the township zoning ordinance, we're going to require a D variance for exceeding the maximum height of 15 feet for an accessory building. Where as we as we mentioned before, this building is going to exceed this height by two feet, nine inches, approximately 20% more than is is the permitted height. In addressing the the negative criteria here, the you know, we're we're exceeding the allowable height, but this building is located away from adjacent residential properties and is screened by surrounding trees that will mask the visual impact that this building will have. This built this proposed building will improve operations and safety at the site, especially during severe weather conditions when responding to utility outages is essential. Exceeding the exceeding the maximum building height of 15 feet by two foot two feet, nine inches is a small deviation from the ordinance requirement. Granting this variance will not substantial will will not be substantially detrimental to the public good and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. And we are requesting that the zoning board approve this variance.
Thank you, Mr. Chauvin. Mr. Chairman, do does the board have?
Any questions on the planning by the board?
No.
Any members of the public have any questions on the planning testimony? I hear none and see none.
I have Chaz Holloway here, I have one question for the applicant. And that was regarding the county comments in the application package. It talks about an eight foot wide right away easement that they're requesting loan advantage. Is that going to be handled with the county?
Yes, Mr. Holloway, essentially, the survey was completed for to plot that easement. And we will be sending the D that is to create the easement to the county planning board for their review. I believe this week most likely, if not this week, next week. And there's no issues with providing that easement to the county, so we will have no problem satisfying that condition. And then the county will provide approval for the project from their perspective.
Very good, thank you.
And I have one more question that the applicant is going to respect all the needs stated pre ongoing and post construction of the Parsipney Troy Hills District Six Fire Department?
Mr. Greco, can you just please confirm that? Or Mr. Chauvin?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that question?
Sure, sure, the Parsippany Chief of District Six Fire Association, just, you know, obviously, he sees no issues. But he does ask that the construction of the roadways be accessible at all times to emergency vehicles, so to that end. I I just said that, you know, you're going to be cognizant and respectful of all the needs pre ongoing and post construction relative to first responders' needs.
Absolutely, we need to maintain a lane of traffic through there for loading and offloading, so it will be accessible and we'll make sure it stays accessible.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there any more testimony, any more witnesses?
No, I believe that's all we have, so if if the board does not have any further questions for the witnesses, I'll just wrap up by saying that you know, the applicant is proposing to build the building as as Mr. Chauvin has testified to. Mr. Greco testified that it's going to improve the safety of the operations at the site. Mr. Chauvin testified that although it needs a D height variance, the the building will almost definitely not be able to be seen by any of the surrounding properties. And that it's going to have no impact on any of the surrounding properties being the height that it is, and that it's essentially a it's a need for safety reasons for the general public. And with that, we would respectfully request an approval of this application from the board.
At this point, are any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? In support of this application, I hear none and see none. I guess you've summed, so the question on board is, do we need to go at the conference or can we just go to a resolution?
Resolution?
All right, can I have a recommendation for a a recommendation to approve this and then we'll go to a
Yeah, I mean, I'll recommend, I'll recommend, this is Nancy Snyder. Well, definitely, the need for infrastructure support has been satisfied and proven. I just, you know, again, as I like to sponsor with all of our applications that they're good neighbors relative to the residential districts that are adjacent to them. That's my chief concern, despite their great need for the infrastructure support and protection and the asset protection during emergency situations. So, you know, I would just implore that as as I voice my support for this project. And then I would just add the quality of life of neighboring residences is also as important. That's it, I'll be voting for.
Somebody, does somebody keep muting, unmuting me, unmuting me? Is there somebody that's muting me all the time?
Yeah, it's me, Mr. Chair.
Will you please stop it?
No, I'm only kidding, Mr. Chair.
It's Mr. Chair.
And I do a lot of talking in these meetings, I can't keep it going to unmute.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
All right, I'm sorry, I keep muting you because you're causing an echo. It's not your fault, I think it's your equipment, and we can discuss this after the meeting. But I'm just trying to keep.
I've been on dozens of these meetings, but I've never ever, I've never been on one with this particular host. But I've I've done Zoom, I've done.
Mr. Chairman.
And nobody's ever questioned my equipment.
Mr. Chairman.
Brand new.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, it's a problem with the software, we discussed this, Zoom is probably the more superior one.
I'm lowering my volume again, okay? All right, at this point, will someone make a rec? For a resolution, please?
I'm sorry. By my by my ears, I did not get any of that due to feedback and and whatnot.
Who made the motion? I think the motion needs to be made again, I couldn't hear what the motion was. Okay, so I'm going to make the motion, an application 2025 JCPN L 46 Parsipney Boulevard, block 450, lot three, zone SED three. We grant a minor site plan with D variance to construct. We grant a minor site plan with D variance to construct a storage structure.
Second, Kaplan.
Your second, thank you. Any discussion? Nora, hold the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz. Thumbs up. Kaplan.
Yes.
Yes.
Prasad.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder. Yes. Willands. Willands.
Yes.
Hurricane. Hurricane's muted. No thumbs up? How about a thumbs up? Thumbs up?
I'm still unmuted.
There he is.
All right, we will memorialize this in two weeks and we'll be free to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and the board. We appreciate your time and we will continue to be good neighbors. Thank you.
Mr. McGowan, I hope this has been entertaining for you.
It was, it was a challenge, but we made it through. Good luck on the next one.
Yeah, appreciate the support.
All I can say is you all better go out and get your vaccines because I can't do this much longer. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, it would probably be easier on Zoom.
I would probably, I, I've been on dozens of Zoom meetings and I've never, ever, ever had a problem. Never had a problem. Zoom and, and Teams. Oh, well, that's either him or the best. All right, why don't we take a five-minute break, okay?
What are you supposed to do on a five-minute break?
Go potty.
Update your equipment so you don't echo back.
By the way, Peter, don't you feel so powerful sitting here? We're waiting for you all night?
No, actually I was on, but I couldn't get on this system.
Nora's looking at you questionably. You should have been in the rehearsal program.
Yeah, well, all I can say is I, I do average at least two Zoom meetings for municipal court. So the state of New Jersey court uses Zoom, but.
You sound like a commercial.
Right, Peter?
I'm sorry?
Peter, they work, right?
I, flawlessly, flawlessly.
Hey Scott, what's your problem? You've been having real troubles. I thought you were a techno wizard. So you're bringing it up again.
You know, you know what this reminds me of? Do you remember the show Hollywood Squares? I can see all these faces. I'm, I'm waiting for somebody.
You know, but the bad thing is everyone's audio is bad, so it cannot be every, everyone's, you know, equipment.
I'll be right back.
But we do need to get some of this work done, so this is the way to get it done, right?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
And now, right at this time, Attorney King, we have a lot of people on the public that are sitting in our gallery here, looking at us. And so we're, everything here is recorded and what we're doing, right?
That's correct. Everything is, should be recorded. The host has control of that, but.
Okay.
But everything should be recorded and everyone should understand that everything they say and do is being recorded audio-wise and also visually.
Okay, so as members of the board, though, we can, we can pass pleasantries with our partners we haven't seen for a long time in person.
That's correct. Mr. King is correct. Everything is being recorded. Just wanted to let you know that, but there are no attendees in the event right now.
There is no public.
Oh, no public. Okay, thanks Nora. Why are you laughing?
Because of circus.
And they ain't looking at an empty chair there for the chairman.
And now we can talk.
Looks like he's down at a shorehouse. Where it comes. And Nora, is, is your office area still closed?
Yeah, somewhere.
What's your sweaters say, Scott?
Listen, he can't, he can't talk. So he can talk during the break, but during the meeting, he somehow can't talk. I.
Yeah, I don't get that either.
I, I think it's selective.
Peter, you're on mute now.
Yeah, I, I muted myself. Now I'm going to mute myself.
So Nora, we're good for that January 20th meeting?
Yes, we are.
Okay. And that's only been the one application?
One application.
Is everybody back?
Think we could hold a 7/11 meeting like this?
Nora?
Is everyone back?
Mr. Kaplan, I do, here's Mr. Kaplan. Okay, Peter's there.
Berkowitz is there, Jaskowitz.
Mr. Berkowitz, Mr. Willans. Let's go. Case 2018, John Alon.
I'm not sure that Nancy is back. I don't mean to interrupt, or Prasad.
Okay. Did everybody see the mayor's plan to make Beverlywood Road narrower than it is already? Nobody? Nobody saw his announcement?
Heard that.
When it snows. What's up Bernie?
Because you made the sidewalks wider.
Ridiculous. That road is like Route 8. I mean, I lived there for 34 years. I know that road intimately. I can't believe they're going to make it narrower. When it snows, you lose a foot on each side minimum, absolute minimum. And if they clean it, you know, diligently, it, it's a horror show. The people don't shovel the sidewalk, so nobody, nobody can walk in this, when there's snow. Half of the, half of the, 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 the area doesn't shovel it.
Well, once you do all those, once you do all those improvements, you're going to need the bigger walkways for all the foot traffic.
What foot traffic?
Exactly.
What foot traffic? And they're going to take the parking lot by the, by the library. They're going to do away with the parking lot by the library. That's going to have an effect on the, on the business. Look at John, what do you think, John? Unmute yourself, John. You're muted, John.
Are we good to go?
I don't know, are we? I still don't see Nancy.
I'm here.
I'm unmuted.
You're not, you have no face.
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here. I'm coming. I'm coming on the video. I don't know what happened here. Here we are.
Okay.
Did I get unmuted? No.
You were muted, yes.
I am not now.
Not now, thank you, John. Okay, alrighty, Mr. Who is representing them here? Which, which face? Oh, there you are, Mr. Sheppas. Good to see you again. You may proceed.
Thank you. I appreciate you hearing us this evening. I would like to just give you a brief opening about this application. Property that's the subject of the application is located at 138 North Beverlywood Road, Lake Hiawatha, Parsippany County. There is presently a mixed-use building on the property. It's a single-family residence joined with a commercial building. Property was the subject of a use variance application before this board in 2017. And the board approved the use of the commercial part of the building for a yoga studio operated by the property owner. So what the property owners would like to do is demolish the existing building and all improvements and start over, creating a new mixed-use building with approximately 2,200 square feet of commercial use on the first floor, including half of the first floor to be used for the same yoga studio. And then likewise, three, two-bedroom apartments on the second floor. The mixed use of commercial on the first floor and apartments on the second is permitted in the B5 zone where the property is located. We're here for a D1 variance relative to the yoga studio. Yes, arguably, the variance runs with the land, but since the building is being demolished and it's a new building, we played it safe and asked for a D1 variance. In addition, we're looking for a D3 variance with regard to one of the conditions in your ordinance as it relates to mixed-use apartments above commercial. We don't need one of the conditions with regard to area on the second floor. So that's the brief nature of the application. Our first witness is Mark Walker. Mr. Walker is the project engineer. He's going to give you a very extensive overview of the project, walk you through the variances and show you what's being proposed. So without delay, I ask that Mr. Walker be sworn and place his credentials on the record.
Sir, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear firm testimony about the trust help you got?
Yes, I do.
And for the, for the record, can you state what your position is?
My name is Mark G. Walker, W A O K E R. I'm the president of Dexter Walker Design Group. We're located in Lake Apackon, New Jersey. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey.
Have you, are you going to be giving engineering testimony tonight?
Yes, I will.
Okay, so you're licensed engineer. All licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes, it is.
And you've been qualified either before this board or other boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I have.
Mr. Chairman, the witness is sworn and qualified.
Okay, I guess before I get started, Earl, I noticed there's like six, six people that are not muted now. Maybe if they were muted, it would be a little cleaner, hopefully.
We can hear you just fine.
You can? Okay, good.
Yes.
I'm going to be sharing some documents, so do I have the ability to do that at this point?
The host would have to enable that. So Earl, if you could enable Mark Walker, he is going to share documents.
He is enabled now. Thank you.
Okay. The, the first document that I have here is the, is not the one I want to show you.
And we're going to, we're going to mark the first document, A1, counsel?
Yeah, this, this could be marked as A1. This is not my first exhibit, though.
Bernard Berkowitz, I'm back at the meeting.
Okay, this is my first exhibit. This is just merely the cover sheet of the site plan that's been submitted to the board.
Counsel, if you could mark the, if you could have your witness maybe mark these. I don't want to.
Yeah, this one doesn't have to be marked because this is the cover sheet of the site plans that were submitted to the board.
Excuse me, they were submitted in color?
Yes, they were.
Okay.
So this is the, the cover sheet of the site plan. It's an aerial image showing the surrounding view of the property. As, as you know, the property is located on North Beverlywood Road. The subject property is Lot 2. The property is located on the northern end of the B5 zone. So we're right near the end of the B5, the business zone. Directly behind the subject property is the R4 zone. The, the subject property is actually in the middle part of the block and it backs up to the rear of some residential properties that are located on Tioga and Oneata Avenue. Property is located, it's actually in the R5 zone, which, B5 zone, which requires 4,000 square foot of lot area. The subject property is 10,971 square feet. The site's developed with an existing house has been converted to a two-bedroom apartment and a yoga studio. On, on-street parking for both sides of the street is available on North Beverlywood Road. The site currently has two narrow driveways with curb cuts onto North Beverlywood Road. One of the curb cuts is 30 feet wide and the other is 15 feet wide. And this actually reduces the amount of on-street parking, having those curb cuts coming out onto the street. Each driveway can hold at least two cars, but only in a tandem configuration, meaning back-to-back. And that's primarily due to the narrow nature of the driveways. To leave the property, cars have to back out onto North Beverlywood Road, which is potentially unsafe a situation. The driveways in the front half of the building will actually drain out to, actually today, drain out to North Beverlywood Road. The rear half of the building, in the rear portion of the lot, slope away from North Beverlywood Road and that area drains to the residential properties located behind the subject property. There's no wetlands or transition areas or floodplains that impact the subject property. Now, what I'd like to do is move on to my first exhibit that we're going to mark. This is a, this is a, this is a rendering, a 3D rendering that was prepared by Stephen Bias. This represents the facade and it's actually the side of the building as you look at it from North Beverlywood Road.
And this is A1.
We could mark this as A1. That's correct. As Mr. Sheppas mentioned, we'll be removing all of the existing improvements that are on the property. We're replacing it with this building, which has a 2,270 square foot footprint. The existing one-and-a-half-story building that's to be removed actually has a similar footprint size of 2,153 square feet. The lower.
Can I interrupt a minute? Excuse me. Do you have, could you give us a similar view of the current site versus this one?
Actually, our planner has photographs of the entire site.
Thank you, thank you.
She'll be showing that. The lower level of the building is proposed to have two spaces. One for 990 square feet would be a retail use, which would be the, the retail use is got flange on North Beverlywood Road and it's the first unit as you come into the site. The rear unit would be an 880 square foot yoga studio. There's also a door located at the very back, which is a vestibule that is used to enter the building to gain access to the upstairs. And then within the upstairs area, there will be three two-bedroom apartments proposed. I'd like to move on to exhibit. I'd like to move on to Exhibit, Exhibit A2, we're going to call it. So Exhibit A2 is, pull this up. So Exhibit A2 is the site plan, which is superimposed over an aerial photograph. And it shows the colored version of the site plan that has been submitted as part of the design plan package. We do have a number of changes that we'll be discussing where this rendering is different than the site plan that has been submitted to the board. I'll be discussing those as I go through my testimony. This, this Exhibit A1 also has a proposed freestanding sign detail as well.
Can you tell me how, can you tell me how close the back of the building is to the mailbox, the UPS store next door?
This, this, within this particular zone, it's a zero setback zone. The proposed building is to be 0.4 feet from the common property line with UPS, UPS property.
And how far away from the property line is the UPS building? My concern is, and I don't know why the fire, maybe the fire did talk about this, but can they get ladders in there to fight a fire on the second story?
Actually, let me zoom in on this a little bit. So the existing building, which is shown in this, as this dark line here, is 10.1 feet from our proposed building, which is a, 10 feet is the building code requirement to make sure that there's adequate separation.
Okay.
Okay. Let me just back out a little bit. Alright, so this is Exhibit A2. So based on the ordinance requirements, we are required to have 15 parking spaces for our proposed uses that I just discussed. We are showing 12 parking spaces on-site. And of the 12 parking spaces, one of them is an ADA compliant handicap parking space. So a variance for the lack of three parking spaces is required. With respect to circulation within the site, we'll have parking on the south side, the building on the north side. We have three doors in the front. I mentioned the doors to the left in the middle gain access to the lower level. The door to the right provides access to a vestibule that has stairs that go to the apartment above, facing North Beverwick Road. We have an additional at-grade entrance into the retail space, the first retail space. Into the rear, or to the northern side, front side of the building, there's a secondary access to the residential, residential apartments up above. And then we have an emergency exit out the back, which provides access to air conditioning units. Now, in the site plan that we submitted to the board, coming out the rear of the emergency access, there was a proposed walkway that wrapped around to the back of the building and tied into the parking area. There was a comment about providing some open green space for the residents who have apartments up above. And since that seemed to be a valid comment, we've removed the walkway wrapping around the building, and we provided a full green area that would allow for a picnic table and a barbecue grill. Provide some green space to hang out with and potentially barbecue. So we do, we do propose to have the air conditioning units at the back of the building in this area. Also, we've slightly modified the dumpster location so the doors for the dumpster enclosure can open up without interfering with the cars that are parked directly adjacent to the dumpster. With respect to the signage, we are proposing some changes relative to the signage. We have a proposed freestanding sign, which we show on this exhibit, will be 10 feet from the right away, which is a requirement in the B5 zone. And then the detail of the freestanding sign is shown on the bottom left-hand corner of this particular exhibit. The sign detail, the sign itself will be four feet wide by six feet high, a total of 24 square feet. The ordinance allows 25 square feet for a sign. The bottom of the sign has to be at least eight feet from the bottom of the ground, and the top of the sign cannot be higher than 15 feet. In this particular instance, it will be 14 feet high. The sign will be internally illuminated, and it will comply with all aspects of that, of the ordinance. And as I mentioned, will be located directly in this area next to the building. It'll be a double-sided sign, so it will be able to be viewed heading southbound as well as northbound. With respect to the building-mounted signs, we had a building-mounted sign on the side of the building that fronts Beverwick Road. And we also have two building-mounted signs on the bumpouts of the building. So I'd like to go back to Exhibit A1, which is the rendering. We're showing, as you can see, the sign shown on this exhibit. Something North Beverwick Road will no longer be proposed. That will be removed. And then we have two simple signs that will be 31 square foot each placed on the bumpouts of the building. Now, those, those particular signs in reviewing the ordinance appear to require a variance. If you review the language of the ordinance, it states that only one sign is permitted to be attached to the main building, but a secondary sign is allowed as long as the secondary sign is not greater than 75% of the first sign. And in this particular instance, both signs are proposed to be 31 square feet. So technically, we would need a variance for that particular provision. There's also another aspect of the ordinance that may need a variance or an interpretation by this board. It states that, it states that the size of the signage is based on the front of the building. And the front of the building is not defined within the ordinance. But it appears, the way the language in the ordinance is written, is that the, the size of the sign is allowed to be 1.5 square feet per every foot width of the building that the sign would front on. Now, this is the side of the building, but the way that our site is designed, it is actually the front of the building. People will park here and walk into the building, so it's technically the front of the building. But under the ordinance, it insinuates the fronts of the building actually front the street. So we've requested a particular variance for the signage. If we were allowed to, if we were allowed to count this side of the building as the front, we would actually be allowed to have, wait a second. We'd be allowed to have 143 square foot of signage along this side of the building. We're only proposing 62 square feet of signage, 31 square foot each. So if the board feels that the variance is required because we're putting signs on the side of the building as opposed to the front of the building that fronts on North Beverwick Road, then, you know, this is our, this is what we're proposing. If you count the, the front of the building that fronts on North Beverwick Road and determine the amount of signage that's allowed based on only that small bit of frontage, we'd only be allowed 42.75 square feet of signage. We're actually not even going to have a building-mounted sign on the North Beverwick side of the road. So it may be a good time to just have a general discussion about that, or if not, I will just continue on.
You say that the town does not specify what's the front?
It does not.
They don't say front.
It doesn't. It says front of the building. Let me, let me read, let me read the section of the ordinance, just a part of it, so you can get a flavor.
Let me interrupt a second. Do we have in the notice for the hearing a request for variance besides?
Yes, we do. Steve, you want to have an opinion on that?
Yes, we do. We have a notice for, we applied for the sign variance, the sign area in the second sign.
So the ordinance reads, no signs will exceed 1.5 square feet in area for each one-foot linear width of the front building wall on which the sign is to be located.
Right. Yeah, your problem is you don't, you've taken the sign off the Beverwick Road, North Beverwick Road frontage. So you take, technically, the way the ordinance is constructed, you're not allowed to have any sign on the inside. So you need sign area variance because you're not using any signs on the front. That's where you start from. And you, the, the building, the front of the building does not face the street.
Correct.
And if you apply the standard for facing the street, you've already given everybody the numbers on that.
I have, that's correct.
But Mr. Towne, that's my point. The variance here is only if the signage was fronting Beverick Road. It's not. So therefore, what's the variance here? I'm confused.
They needed, they need a variance for the area of the two signs.
I got that.
Because the area for those two signs is derived from the area of the sign that would face North Beverick Road. They've chosen not to front any sign on North Beverick Road. So consequently, the area of the ordinance is zero.
Okay, alright, okay. Yeah, okay, thank you.
I mean, 75% of nothing is nothing.
Exactly, okay. Now, I have another question on the site plan. So if you could pick up where the dumpster is going to be back at the back of the property through the parking lot? So we're going to have apartment units there, and then the township, the garbage structure, going to have to go through that parking lot to go to dumpsters?
That's correct. Well, I believe this would, I'm not sure who would pick up here. It's either going to be the town or the private home.
The town picks up on the curb on Beverick Road. You don't need a dumpster. You just put your hands out on the street.
Right.
They have a pickup on Beverick Road.
Yeah.
If that makes any difference to you. It makes a difference depending on what is behind, what's behind that dumpster. Is there a house behind, I couldn't tell from the, you're like, what's behind that dumpster? Is there a house? Is there a residence?
We're in the middle of the block, so the dumpster is here and the house is way over here. So it's in the back of the, where we are, is in, within this area.
Once again, I throw out, you don't need a dumpster on this road. You put your garbage cans out on the street.
We do have two commercial uses.
Doesn't matter on Beverick Road. Beverick Road, they pick up at the curb.
Mm-hmm.
Because most of the businesses on Beverick Road have no, have no facilities for them. I'm just throwing that out, okay? I, I don't, I'm a little concerned because it's up against somebody's backyard.
Yep.
In the summertime, when they're out there having a barbecue, the garbage dumpster is right. I'm a little concerned, but that, let's move on at this point. We can, we can address that later.
One thing to your point, Mr. Chairman, currently, is that, is that what the garbage removal dynamic is? They're picking up at the curb for what, the yoga place now and the apartment building that's in place?
That's correct.
Alright, so yeah, it's definitely a quality of life issue that's going to change for the area residents.
Right. I don't, I don't believe, we'll have to talk to our clients, but I don't believe we're going to have a problem getting rid of the dumpster.
Good.
Okay, alright, so let me, let me move back to our exhibit here. I just want to briefly talk about lighting. On the site plan that we have submitted, we have a building-mounted light fixture in this area, and then one on the bumpout area of the building. And since we've, we've come up with a signage plan, we'd like to smooth our lighting out a little bit better. So we're going to remove two larger fixtures and replace them with three smaller fixtures. We will have a smaller fixture located in the center of each one of these panels in between the signs. Can everyone hear me? I look like I've, I look like I've frozen.
Oh, you're okay.
Okay, good.
Your voice is good.
We're frozen.
Looks like you were in a sort of witness protection program.
Yeah. It's not a good look. Let me see if I can unfreeze this.
You're okay.
Alright, so at any rate, we also have canopy lighting proposed underneath the canopy that'll light up the sidewalk that's covered by the overhang from the apartment above. The doors on the outside will have some residential light fixtures that'll provide lighting for those, for those areas. Getting back to the site plan, just briefly, we did have, just finishing up with a little lighting comment. We did have, within respect to this walkway and the walkway behind the building, we did have bollards proposed in the back to light the walkway and then sconces on the building to light the walkway in the rear, so those will be removed from the site plan.
You're not going to have any lighting in that creation, leisure area?
This area in the back?
Yes.
We are not proposing any lighting back there. If you would like us to put some lighting in, we could put some bollards back in.
You know, it obviously needs to just be low lighting. It's, you can't say people wouldn't sit out there in the heat. But I think lighting should be there.
Okay, we'll add a couple of bollards, which are low lighting, that we had originally proposed for the, for the walkway. We'll put those back in. With respect to landscaping, we do have a fence, a six-foot-high fence proposed where we, where our property butts up to the residential properties next door. That fence would be three feet from our property line. And then from the fence to the property line, we're proposing a row of giant green arborvitae that will help add some greenery that will be on the neighbor's side of the fence. That'll add some landscaping. The other landscaping we have is some accent landscaping around the parking lot and foundation plantings around the building.
Did you mention anything about lighting on the parking lot?
Yes, the lighting for the parking lot will come from these three proposed light fixtures that'll be attached to the building. Thank you. With respect to drainage... Um, with respect to drainage, uh, the first third of the, um, the first third of the parking lot will actually drain out towards North Beverwick Road. Uh, the remainder of the site, the building and the back part of the parking lot will be, uh, collected and infiltrated into the ground. So there'll be no impact relative to stormwater, relative to the residential properties, uh, behind us or the commercial properties to the north or to the south of us. Uh, we are, as a result of our site work and exploitation for the building, uh, going to be removing some soil from the property. Um, there are 735 cubic yards of material that would be removed as a result of this, uh, of this project. Um, just, uh, with respect to the variances, uh, let me just go over those real quickly. Now, we've, we've touched on them. Uh, we'll have more discussion about them. Um, basically, we have three, three variances, uh, and two, uh, use variances. Um, so the, uh, the parking, as I mentioned, we're providing 12 or 15 are required. We, we briefly discussed the consolidation of the existing curb cuts, but it will actually generate one new additional on-street parking space. Um, there's a bus line along North Beverwick Road. Uh, public transportation is recognized by the residential site improvement standards as a factor in reducing residential parking requirements. Uh, the project's also located in the busy, uh, Lake Hiawatha business area and some of the residential tenants may work locally and actually walk to work. Uh, given these factors and the fact that there is on-street parking available, the proposed parking will be adequate. Uh, we did discuss the signage. Uh, we have 62 square feet of signage on the side of the building, which requires a variance. Um, third variance is a residential landscape buffer. Uh, there's a 15-foot buffer that's required, uh, along the, uh, common property line into our site. Um, and we show that line located as a dashed line into here. Um, the house on, uh, Lot 24, which is, which is on Onea, Oneata Avenue, uh, is about 70 feet from the property line. Uh, and again, we have, uh, giant green arborvitae and then a fence behind the giant green arborvitae. And then we have some one, two, three, four, five parking and, and a handicap parking portion of those spaces are within that, uh, landscape buffer. Um, so if we, if we were forced to comply with the, uh, buffer requirement, we would most likely have to reduce the depth of our building. And in this particular area, because of the UPS building next door, we have a jog in the building. This building is only 21 feet deep in this area. And to make this parking and this 15-foot buffer comply, we'd have to make this building only 11 foot deep, which would not be, uh, practical, uh, or, or most likely to just kill the project. Um, so this, as I mentioned, the, uh, the green arborvitae wraps around the property line as well as the fence, um, along the perimeter, uh, with respect to the residential neighboring properties. Uh, with respect to, uh, Lot 3, now that we've removed the dumpster, uh, there are really not many improvements located within this 15-foot buffer. The building itself is 15 feet from the property line. We've created a green area for the, uh, residential tenants, uh, and, uh, we can actually reduce some of this paving area since the dumpster would be relocated, um, which would provide, uh, even more green space, uh, within that 15-foot area. Um, the other two variances that remain are, uh, a use variance for the yoga studio and, uh, the percentage of the residential use compared to the total building square footage is over 50%, uh, where 50% maximum split is allowed. So that's, uh, that's my testimony. I'd be glad to take, uh, any questions.
I have one on the, on your comment on the size of the building. So there was 11 footer and 25, I, I, I lost part of that. You said if, if the building couldn't be this width, the project couldn't go forward.
Yeah, well, this, so, so there's a 15-foot, uh, uh, buffer required from the residential property line.
Yes.
So we have Lot 24, which has a 70-foot backyard, and then a 15-foot buffer would be, be required on top of that. If we were to comply with this, uh, 15-foot buffer, the parking lot would have to shift, which would reduce the depth of this building from 21 feet to 11 feet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions by the board?
How many trees are coming down to support this project?
We are surveyed, it does not show any trees, uh, in the backyard. Um, I'm, I'm not 100% sure, but normally we would have located trees, uh, in this particular condition. We're not showing any trees in the backyard.
Okay. So not on, not on the west side of this development, correct? This proposed development? No trees are coming down?
Yeah, well, the west side is the street side, the North Beverwick side, and the east side is the rear, uh, rear side.
Do you know what the second commercial, uh, tenant is going to be at this time or no?
I do not know that.
Would you be willing to restrict the second, uh, unit to no medical and no restaurant?
We could take that up with the client before the night's out.
Because you're talking about two acres, but you require a lot of parking and therefore you'd have to come back and most likely come back from those variances. And you know what? We don't like to, uh, get a second look at these things. We like to take care of them over one shot.
I have one more question on the parking too, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
We, we talked about requirement for variance on parking spaces. The testimony was there's adequate parking on the street on Beverwick. Uh, I think we've had a lot of applications that challenge that, uh, statement. So, uh, the parking restrictions here, when you have the apartments and, and the resident, I mean, the residential and the business. So I'm a little confused on that. Uh, so right now, you're suggesting that you would have to have at least four or five parking places on Beverwick Road for this proposed, uh, property development?
So three parking spaces would be required and as a result of, uh, uh, removing the curb cuts that currently exist there today, we would be creating one, uh, one, one extra space, uh, that would be, uh, that, that would be on North Beverwick Road that doesn't exist today.
Okay. Mr. Walker, how many people normally attend the, uh, yoga studio when it's in, in force, when it's in, in session? How many potential cars are there for the yoga studio?
I believe we're going to have some testimony about that actual use. Um, I'm not going to be the one doing that, though.
Thank you. To Mr. Williams' mention of, of parking, maybe there's, there's ample parking across the street in front of the auto repair business. And the problem is that, and the problem, uh, the town does not regulate the parking on Beverwick Road in any, in any substance law.
Right.
There's no, there's no parking space wise, there's no enforcement of the one hour parking, et cetera. So it's a free rule. It's a free rule.
So to your point, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I mean, this, uh, this expert testimony is, is saying that, that the parking is adequate. And if you're, if you're intensifying the use, the residential use is intensifying for the property, I'm just not seeing it. If it's a two, if it's three two-bedroom apartments, he's counting on a lot of these tenants being pedestrians, which I'm not convinced as of now. Maybe there'll be other expert testimony, uh, that'll play me otherwise. And it looks like everything's going to spill on the street.
Well, that's also why I suggested that we limit what the second, uh, retail store can be. We don't want, we don't want a restaurant and we don't want a dumpster because that would get, that would, that would be a situation significantly.
I think one other benefit that, uh, our, our project has is that, uh, is that it is residential and commercial, and many times the residents go to work when the commercial uses are peaking. Uh, and one other benefit that we have to this, uh, project is that we're basically on the end of the B5 zone. Uh, we're not in the busiest section within the B5 zone. We're not in the heart of Lake Hiawatha, where there's a lot more activity and businesses around. We do have, uh, across the street, we have the, uh, bar area, uh, and, uh, the liquor store, which has a huge parking spa, parking, uh, parking lot. Uh, and then we also have the, uh, the truck rental place across the street, which is another large use that has, uh, on-street parking as well, or off-street parking as well. Um, we are essentially creating another parking space by removing, um, by removing the curb cut. And, uh, I think that there is also, um, the, um, uh, the factor that we are on a bus line and we do have the ability to have commuting parking. The apartments are not large apartments. They're not going to be very expensive apartments. Uh, so the, the likelihood of each apartment having two cars, which is what's required under the RSIS, is, is most likely unlikely. Um, so based on providing the extra space on the street, we're really, we're really down two parking spaces net. And, uh, based on all those other factors that I've mentioned, we're confident that there's going to be plenty of parking for this project.
Also, to address Chairman's comments, uh, I have communicated with the applicant, uh, via text, and the applicant agrees that should the board act favorably on this project, uh, that there would be a restriction, that there'd be no medical office in the building and likewise, one sit-down restaurant.
Thank you, Mr. Sheppes. But, Mr. Walker, I, I think you did say that these were three two-bedroom apartments, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So me and my buddy Jim decided to go rent an apartment together because there's two, there's two bedrooms. That's two cars. If you told me there were only one bedroom apartments, I might, I might half buy this car. Yeah, I, I've known this for 30 years.
Right, these, these apartments.
It's not that, not that simple.
These apartments are small apartments, small two-bedroom apartments. And you, and when you hear the testimony from the architect, you'll understand, uh, the scope of the apartment much better.
Yeah, but you know, I, I, we could hear from the architect, but I, Mr. Ira Kane's a painting, uh, or Mr. Chairman is painting the best-case scenario. In today's economy, people are going to be putting bunk beds in these bedrooms. So times that by four. And then I ask you, what bus line to which do you refer that tenants here are going to be transit-dependent to be able to make that, 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 that employment commute? I'm curious what bus line you're referring to.
There's a bus that goes by every other day.
No, no, no. Right, okay, right, exactly. So unless you have a job every other day, it's not going to work. This, this area is not as transit-dependent as people in Clifton, Patterson, uh, Dover. I, I'm just curious what bus line you're, you keep referring to that's going to take or relieve North Beverwick and this intensified proposal that's going to relieve them of the vehicular traffic?
Uh, it would be the Lakeland Bus Line that would be going through there. Um, I don't have their schedule.
Okay, well, that's a, that's a New York line.
There's a New York bus line that goes through.
Yes, that's the Lakeland.
There's also a line that goes as far as Montclair because my son, when he worked with me, occasionally took the bus when he didn't have his car.
I understand. But it's a narrow, it's a, it's a narrow demographic. It's a narrow demographic, uh, all right? It's not like, uh, like the Wallbrook bus lines. Um, you know, you have to be going to very few places. It's not like the 29, which the 29 doesn't even cross here. Uh, the 29 is up more by Minnehaha. I mean, I'm sure the person can walk there if they choose to do so. But I think you're pa, you're painting a euphoric scenario here that I'm concerned about relative to just, you're intensifying the use of this property. And I think you're really egregiously underestimating the parking needs for it.
Well, we hope to allay your concern when we have the testimony from the yoga studio operator. And I, I do point out that right now, the yoga studio has only a driveway that you can randomly park in. So none of the customers park on sites presently. So we're improving that condition, but we'll get into that testimony and hopefully that will allay your concern.
And understood, but you're intensifying the overnight usage and the overnight parking needs of these three two-bedroom residential complexes, which at best scenario, you're going to have six tenants in need of a vehicle. So then, and then if there's bunk beds, there's going to be more, I, I mean, and if there's a driving age, there's going to be more, more demand.
We could also allay one of the concerns about the sufficiency of the parking for the tenants. We could restrict, uh, the, uh, number of automobiles that each tenant can have to know more than two. Do that in the lease. So that coupled with no restaurant, no medical office, uh, I, I think that would help.
But if it's still two for apartments, that's six cars.
Yeah. Minus 12. Minus 12 and add a dump truck that won't have a predictable schedule, I would assume, in, in, you know, removing the garbage.
Well, we're not going to have a, we're going to have trash at the curb as we suggested. So there'll be no, no garbage truck coming out.
That's, that's very ta, that's very taxing on existing resources. That's a consideration that the board needs to make as well, as this, as this property intensifies.
Well, if you consider the apartments, uh, you know, one can of pickup and if you consider yoga studio can't be very much, and if we limit the, uh, proposed section building, there's not going to be this big, uh, garbage heap for a, for a restaurant that's not going to be there. That, that I think is doable. I think it's.
Okay, if there's no other questions, then Mr. Walker, maybe we should move on to the architect.
Mr. Chairman, it is 9:55.
I'm sorry, I was not, uh, I'm, I was thinking back to the time when we used to meet till 11:00. How many more questions do you have, Mr. Sheppes?
Oh, can you hear me? I apologize. I don't know how that happened. Uh, I have the architect, he should be about five minutes, and then the operator of the yoga studio, which will be about five minutes, and then the planner will probably be about 15 minutes.
Well, I need, I need a, a response from the board. Are you willing to go a little bit more clear or not?
I'm trying to get rid of the architect if we could.
All right, let's go with the architect. Let's go with the architect.
All right, our next witness is Mr. Steven Bias. Mr. Bias is a licensed professional architect. He's the architect of record in this project. So I'm going to ask that he join us, be sworn, and state his credentials on the record.
Sir, could you raise your right hand? You swear firm testimony about to give for the parts you yourself you got?
Yes, sir.
And you're a licensed architect?
Yes, sir.
Sir, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear a firm testimony about to give before the parts true self you got?
Yes, sir.
And you're a licensed architect?
Yes, sir.
And all your licensers, licenses are in full force and effect?
That's correct.
And you've been sworn before this board and other boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I have.
All right, Mr. Chairman, it's been sworn and qualified.
Very good. Mr. Bias, could you tell us a little bit about what exists on the property today from an architectural standpoint? And what it is you've endeavored to accomplish in this submission this evening?
Sure, I'll try to be very brief. As Mr. Walker stated, there's a, a structure that consists of a two-bedroom apartment with a small attached appendage, like it's, I believe it's a garage on the north side. And on the south side of the building, it's a single-story yoga studio. That's what exists there now. So it's clearly the, that, the bu, the present building wasn't designed for this unique site. It seemed to be a, an evolution of form and use on that spot. So what we're looking to do is, as Mark mentioned, remove that so that we could create a, a new and more pleasant and safer environment for both the commercial tenants and the residential tenants. So as Mr. Walker mentioned, we're proposing a two-story building. The bottom floor would consist of the commercial spaces with staircase access to the second floor. And the second floor would consist of three two-bedroom apartments. Just to be efficient, each of the apartments is around 750 square feet. The standard for today's apartments is, two-bedroom apartments is between 800 and 1,000. So by the market rate, we're slightly below the lower or the average of, of, of the going market for two-bedroom units. The architecture is going to be traditional in form. We're using gable-style roofs, asphalt shingles. The residences will be clad in a horizontal siding with corner trim and freezeboard trim. We'll be using a double-hung window, which this pays some respect to the adjacent properties behind us, the residential properties. And then the lower floor will be clad with a brick veneer similar to many of the other commercial buildings along the North Beverwick Strip.
All right, Mr. Bias, up, up on the screen before us is the architectural plan. Is that the plan you prepared in conjunction with this project?
Yes, sir.
All right, so why don't you just walk us through the units? First, I'll ask you, are they all comparable in size? And if so, what accommodations does each have?
Yeah, they're, they're, the, the, the unit closest to Beverwick is 725 square feet. And the other two are 743. So what we have here is we have an access corridor that runs left to right at the north side of the building. And that connects all three of the units. The units are afforded two means of egress so that we're, we have a very safe and compliant, you know, evacuation from this building. The north side of the building is going to be close to the property line. So that does not have fenestration and will probably require a two-hour rating. So we're very limited in our ability to put any openings or, you know, clearly, we're not going to put any windows in that side of the building. Each of the bedrooms, so each unit, consists of a small kitchenette, kitchen area, a living room, and two bedrooms with a single bath. We have limited storage space within the entire structure. So we've provided two walk-in closets in each of the bedrooms and two wall closets in the main hallway of the, of the, of each, of each unit. With regard to the number of bedrooms, it's interesting that this is where we are at this time. It, it is very hard to rent a one-bedroom apartment. And that reason is clearly emphasized during this COVID period where many of the two-bedroom apartments are being occupied by a single with the second bedroom being used as a home office or remote employment. There was a, a show on this morning on the news saying that a one-bedroom apartment in Manhattan or any metropolitan area is almost impossible to rent, simply for that reason. So in this case, we are providing two bedrooms. They're each 10 feet by less than 12. They're around 11.6 in each of the three units. So it's, they're not grand, but we're, we think they're nicely proportioned and efficient with regard to the overall use of the building.
All right, now, Mr. Bias, one of the variances we're asking for is to be permitted to have excess square footage, if you will, on the second floor. The ordinance limits the residential component to no more than 50% of the overall floor area of the building. So could you extract for us the areas on the second floor, which are not actually devoted to dwelling space, but are common areas such as hallways and staircases?
All right, so Mr. Sheppes notes that our second floor extends over the covered walkway of the first floor. Clearly, this provides some protection in the weather, in our climate. So it's a desirable situation to have the entrance to a commercial area with some type of covering. In this case, we chose to use more of the units above and not use a roof over that area, but simply cover that walkway with a portion of our second floor. That allows us to create a little bit more room in our apartments, make them a little bit more desirable. But you can see, the, the gridded area on the second floor plan shows the amount of floor area that we need to provide a compliant egress path from each of the units. So on the north side of the building, I used a five-foot-wide corridor. Using a proper-sized corridor reduces, you know, damage or problems with the width of that when you're moving furniture, when you, you know, two people passing by. So we used a five-foot width there along the back, and we have two staircases. So that eats up at least 750 to 800 square feet of that proposed second floor area.
Right. So is it fair to say that if you would just account the dwelling space and exclude the common hallways and the staircases up on the second floor, that the dwelling space would be no more than 50% of the overall square footage of the building?
That's correct. Yes, sir, yep.
And also, you'd indicated that you have a canner lever over the sidewalk, and that provides for a covered entranceway for the commercial units below.
The commercial units and access to the residential vestibule as well, yes.
Okay. And each of the, the residences on the second floor have a two ways in, one out to the front of the building, one out to the back. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
And this, and the same for the commercial units? They all have two ways, one in and out, correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
And this building that you're proposing, as it relates to its configuration and its size, it all conforms to the current building code?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, sir, it does, yeah.
Will the building be sprinkled?
The building will be, yes, it will. It'll be fully equipped with a sprinkler system.
Both the residential and the commercial component?
All three levels. Second floor, commercial floor, and the basement here.
All right, very good. I don't have any other questions of Mr. Bias.
Thank you.
I have a question on the two-way access or address. On, on the unit, on the far-left unit on the graph right now, how do they, where's their second egress?
The corridor provides, are you speaking from the unit? So you, first of all, the bedroom windows are, what are required to have egress capacity. So each of those bedrooms, those windows are compliant in size for an egress window.
Excuse me a minute.
We actually have three, we actually have three means of egress if you count that. So we have the main corridor, which would run down the staircase and exit to the parking lot. And then we have the corridor on the north side of the building, where the stairs go down and exit on the North Beverwick side of the building.
Keep moving left for me, the unit on the left, okay?
Yes.
So, so you want the people there to jump out the windows onto the parking lot? Because they don't have any back windows or any windows.
They have a door, they, their entry door goes down the main hallway, and it also goes to the secondary hallway on the north side of the building.
The secondary hallway on the north side of the building, I guess I missed that.
Right where Mark has that hand going, that's the second, that's the second staircase.
Oh, there's a staircase back there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I missed that, I apologize.
No problem.
Any other questions by the board? I would state there's no members of the public that are in this meeting. So, yeah, is that, that's it for the architect?
Yes, sir. Unless there's any other questions.
Okay. Well, 10:07, Nora, when can we carry this case to?
February 10th.
February 10th? John, you got any questions, John?
Yeah, there's a couple of things I think we ought to clean up before we get it scheduled. The ret, the building elevation that was described as having no sign facing North Beverwick Road. First of all, that seems kind of odd, but it looks like something there. If you look at that, if you.
Right, we have not revised the architectural since Mr. Walker's testimony. So that was, that was something that evolved over the past couple of days. So ultimately, I'll revise my building elevations to correspond to that reduced sign at square footage.
Okay. The next thing is the buffer area. The buffer area applies to a residential zone. If we get colored rendering up of the site plan, the area where the dumpster was is a required buffer area. The area next, at the north side of the property where the air conditioners are, that doesn't have to have a buffer area. The area that is the lower right side of the, where the four parking spaces are, that requires a buffer area. The area is 20 feet wide, not 15. That's the requirement. So I, before they were talking about buffers where the air conditioners are, they don't need a buffer there. And, and what they come out is they talked about landscaping. How big are the trees? Have they changed or are they the same? I mean, this is kind of a moving target from my, from my end.
Mark, can you answer that question, the size of the bushes on planning?
Yes, I'm asking that.
We can't hear you.
Are you with us?
Mark is muted.
Bias, can I mute him? Still?
See, if I was sitting in the room with him, I'd hit him in the ribs with my elbow.
Oh, boy.
Best I could do is text him.
Okay, I'm muted. I, for some reason, I, you know, I can't stop sharing this thing and I can't get access to my video or my mute button. So whatever, we're, we're almost there. So there's no changes to the proposed evergreen trees. The only thing that we've done was eliminate this walkway. And, and correct, the air conditioning units are outside of the residential buffer. And the way that the residential buffer is calculated is based on the, the building height. So we, I believe that we've, we've, we have calculated it correctly. We have always had the calculation on our sheet from day one when we submitted the plans. And it's 10 feet plus five feet for every 10-foot interval of building height exceeding 15 feet in height. So I believe we've calculated the buffer correctly at 15 feet.
What did you, did you take the height of the building to the peak? Or did you take the half, half, half the roof height? Because precipice ordinance goes to the peak. That, that's the problem. That's where the additional, additional depth comes. You never did say how big the trees are.
Well, you know, let's see. We have them on the landscaping plan. We can, we can check the height of the trees. Is there a specific height that you're looking for?
Now, how's six, how's six feet on planning, John?
I think you need to make the offer, you know, we'll comment. I mean, the fence is six feet high, the trees are six foot high, and, and you want relief on the buffer, so.
That's correct.
I'm going to leave that, I'm going to leave that question to you.
Okay, typically, we would show them six feet high. Yeah, that's the planting height, and then they grow from there.
Maybe, maybe you should think about that a little longer. The only other thing is, I don't think we ever got the date of this exhibit.
The exhibit is today's date.
Today's date, okay. Now, is it going to be filed with the board? Or are you going to further amend it?
We can, since there are a number of changes on the plan, we can amend the plans and resubmit them to the board.
And the only other thing I have, Mr. Chairman, the last comment, that one freestanding sign, you know, that's, that's pretty utilitarian. I'm being kind using that word. I mean, it should, it should have some, other than, you know, a sign up post. And I, I would rethink that.
Okay, we'll, we'll take a look at that.
I, I have a quick question, because I will forget it the next time we hear this. In regards to this outline, the landing pad to the left of the air conditioning units, I assume that's coming from the second floor, that's the second floor egress. Where do people go from there? I mean, what, you know, that borders the UPS property, right? So obviously, it's another egress, but where's everybody going?
So that comes up from the basement. That, that, the sec, the second floor exits to Beverwick Road. Right, that's just, that just comes up from the basement.
And the second, the second floor.
So from the second floor, there's only two egresses, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. But, okay, so where, where's that person from the basement going? I mean, they're not going to the street, they're not going, I, I mean, I guess they are, but are they walking their property line?
So the basement, I want to require is one means of egress.
I understand that.
All right, so you have a staircase on the east side of the property that takes you out through the vestibule on the parking lot side of the basement. That's our compliance means of egress for the basement.
Mr. Bias, if that helped, if we were to be able to see the north side of the building. Do you have that in your package, the north side of our building?
Yeah, because I'm talking about the north side of the building. I'm not talking about the east side.
Yeah, it, it, it's, it's not clear. So could we see a, a drawing on the north side, where these stairs are going to, where the air conditioning is and whatever else there is? Is it in our package? Oh, is that a sample? Oh.
That's what I asked for earlier, a picture of the north side.
That's the north side. I don't, I don't see.
I don't see it either.
Yeah, the stairs would be, would be coming out of here.
Out of where?
See where the hand is?
Yeah, it looks like a wall.
Yeah, this is, this, this jogs out, and this is, the stairs would come down to here. So the grade would be a little bit lower in here than what's shown on this elevation.
I'm sorry, I still don't get it.
I don't get it either.
The floor elevation is where the hand is. You got to clarify that, because none of the, any of us understand, none of us are architects.
That's for next time.
And it's been, it's been 50 years since I took mechanical drawing, so.
Well, I, I'm sorry, I was. If you can go to A4, maybe we can clear this up.
This is, is this A4? This is A4, isn't it?
Literally last year, it has the basement floor, there we go. Little last sheet, it has the basement floor. There we go. On the right-hand side of my sheet, you'll see a staircase. That staircase takes us from the basement to the parking lot. That is our required means of egress. This staircase on the, on the, on the north side is merely a service staircase. It is not a required means of egress. So the doorway at the top, the commercial unit, provides us access to those air conditioners and just to that side of the building. So there's, it is, it is not proposed to be a code-compliant means of egress on that side of the building, because we don't need it. So think of it, I mean, if we eliminated the door, it would simply be an access from those commercial spaces to the basement.
What about the second floor? Where's the staircase?
The second floor goes down from the second floor towards the street. It's above that. It's above that. I guess I could provide you with a section next time to show that. But they stack one over the other. The residential tenants would have access to the basement through the vestibule on the parking lot side.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, I think it's very difficult for the applicant to make the presentation in this, in this mode, but there's obviously a lot of questions. So how do we proceed?
I think it's the applicant's responsibility to produce something that we can, we can see and understand.
Agreed, because I can't understand it right now, so. It seems to me there's a lot of things going on in this building that they're asking for variance design, and I don't understand what we, why or how we could approve them.
Well, I could provide you whatever you'd like to see. I just wanted to know what it is that's confusing you. The staircases stack above each other. So from the second floor, they go down toward Beverlywick. That's one. The other one comes down on the right-hand side of the building towards the parking lot. That's the other one. So what can I provide to clarify that?
So the staircases on the outside of the building are not open to the, open to the weather. They're enclosed. So when we look at the back of the building, we're just seeing a wall because the staircases aren't visible. They're behind the wall.
That's correct. Yes. Yes.
And how, now, let me see if I understand this from the second floor. Do you have windows that could be used for exit in an emergency? Do we have two staircases going up to the second floor or one staircase going up to the second floor?
Two.
Two. Is that the one over here on the left, right side of this picture? That goes upstairs to the second floor?
Yes.
And this one in the back with the little squares, that also goes up to the second floor?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. I think, I think I understand.
I see that now.
Davey, do you understand?
Yeah, I, that's.
Any other questions for tonight, ladies and gentlemen?
While we are on the stairs, how many stairs are going in the basement?
There are two staircases that go to the basement. Only one of those staircases needs to exit, to have a complete exit path to the parking lot. That staircase that provides a compliant egress from the basement is located on the short end of the building. Good.
What will be, what will be used in the basement, or what's going to be in the basement? Just storage?
I believe, yeah, primarily storage.
Storage for home. Yeah, any resolution.
The commercial or the residential?
I would, I'd have to let the client speak to that, but I believe it's strictly for the commercial units.
So on the basement.
Hold on for a second, because you said the stairs on the north section of the property to the basement was just a service entrance.
I said it's a service staircase for the commercial to access the basement area.
Okay, so it's most likely going to be a commercial basement for commercial tenants?
Yes, I believe so.
So we can, we can exclude any, you know, people being down there, you know, for any length of time, and it'll just be used for storage of, of, you know, boxes and supplies?
Hot water heater, you know.
So no yoga studio down there, no meeting room down there, no offices down there?
Well, I think we should restrict the rental of that space separately. It can't be rented.
Yeah, that's where I'm going, Mr. Chairman.
It can't be a separate component of the building.
You know, we would agree that it would be accessory to the retail spaces, and I'll take it up with my client if it's going to be accessory to the residential. Maybe they'll give the residential tenants a little storage space down the basement. I'm not sure yet, but we'll get you that answer. But we would agree that it would not be rented separately, that it would be accessory to the other tenants in the building.
Yeah, and I mean, and then, and then I think we should examine, unless I'm overstepping, you know, what's going to be stored down there? Because, you know, as, as everybody's explaining and the board members are confused, the first thing that came to my mind is I wouldn't want to be in this building in an emergency when all the confusion, you know, ran amok among the board members. So I'm just like, as we, as we talk about that basement, I certainly wouldn't want something highly flammable or toxic down there.
Yeah, so, so again, we would put something in there that, that people would not be down there. It would just only be the storage of materials with regard to the businesses.
Right. Well, materials that are in conformity with the fire codes and everything. No?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, Nora, February 10th?
February 10th.
Mr. Sheppes, is that agreeable?
Unless there's a sooner date.
There is not a sooner date.
Then it's, then it's agreeable.
Well, I'm figuring we could all meet on, on New Year's Eve because nobody's going to be partying, so maybe we could have a meeting on New Year's Eve.
We could, we could Zoom in the New Year together.
Yeah, Zoom would be preferable, but I don't think the town uses Zoom. They use this.
Do they pay you, Pete? Does Zoom pay you for all this?
Yuri Murphy will probably not let us party on New Year's Eve. I have a motion to carry this case to February 10th without any further notice, and with whatever extensions are required, Mr. Sheppes, you agree to that?
Yes, I do.
So move Snyder.
Motion to that effect.
So move Snyder.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
So move Snyder.
Please.
All in favor?
Aye.
One, one question.
No.
When, when do we get to say happy holidays, everybody?
Well, I figure, since we have a meeting in two weeks.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Bye.
I expect everybody to have a drink on their table. And at the end of the meeting, we're all going to toast, okay? Everybody agreeable to that?
Agreed. Flying or what?
What's that?
Well, never mind.
Since we don't have to drive home, it can be anything.
Yeah, exactly.
As much as you want. You don't even have to drive home.
That's what I did tonight.
Now, don't drink, don't drink and drive unless you have a car, okay? Good. Thank you again. We'll see you in two weeks.
God bless, guys.
Good night.
Bye.
Hey, John, you look great. Good night.
We just, yeah, this is the horrible system.
I know, but you just leave the meeting and we'll be okay.
I'm going to hang up. I'll see you.
Bye-bye.
Am I, am I on now?
Yes, you saw. You have to click Leave Event.
You know, this, this thing says now I'm muted. No, I'm muted. It's been backwards all night. Drive me crazy. Bye.